Good evening. This is Amy O'Brien. Welcome to the Shenango Forks Board of Education Regular Meeting, December tenth, two thousand and twenty. Will the clerk please conduct roll call?
Amy O'Brien?
Here.
Lynn Lockwood?
Here.
Spears Tomatoes?
Here.
Mike Fabra?
Sure.
And Mary Collins?
Here.
We have a quorum. I call this meeting to order.
I, Erin McMullin, board clerk, have confirmed with council that this meeting is being held in compliance with Executive Order two oh two point one issued by Governor Andrew M. Cuomo on March twelfth, two thousand and twenty. The executive order suspends Article seven of the Public Officers Law to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take any action authorized by law without permitting in public in-person access to meetings and authorizing such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar service. This meeting is being held remotely via Zoom virtual meeting software. The public has the ability to view or listen to this meeting live via the Zoom app, web browser, and/or by telephone. This meeting is being recorded and will be transcribed at a later date.
You stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One point three, public comment.
The public wishing to speak to the Board of Education will be allowed this period of time to do so under the following guidelines. Speakers will be limited to a maximum of three minutes and the entire public comment session to a maximum of thirty minutes. Speakers are requested to raise their hands using the button on their screen. You'll answer in order. Please let somebody go ahead of you. If you have another question, you'll we'll answer you in order. Speakers, please state your name and topic. Speakers will not be allowed to personally attack any board member, administrator, or any of the public present. Also, no comments by the speakers will be permitted that deal with executive session subjects, such as individual personnel matters, discipline issues pertaining to specific individuals, including students, and speakers will not be allowed to read letters. We have one hand. Phyllis Church? Please unmute yourself.
Go ahead, Phyllis.
Okay, I'll try to unmute you. We just don't touch anything. There we go. Okay, Phyllis, you're on.
That was an error.
Okay. Okay, I don't see any other hands up yet.
If no one wishes to speak, this concludes the public comment portion. Two point one, superintendent's report. You're muted.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. I was really seeing some good stuff there for a minute, so I apologize for being muted. I have a few people under my report, so the first person I'd like to start with is Kara Zimmerman. Kara Zimmerman has been in the district, I think she told me, for fourteen years the other day, and she is our lead nurse, and she's our current nurse in the middle school. And I wanted her to speak to the public. We have a lot of people on in the audience tonight. I wanted her to speak to the current issues we're having at CF in regards to elementary school and what we had to do on Monday, closing the school down, sending the staff and students home due to the COVID virus. Plus, in the middle school and the high school, and I know she's been in contact with our school doctor, Doc Nash, and she wants to give the board an update on exactly where we are, as well as the community with the pandemic and how it's affecting our education, our ability to to function daily. And after her, I'm going to have Mary M. speak on behalf of the CFTA in regards to the same thing. So Kara, if you'd like to go first, thank you. Kara, you're muted now.
There we go. Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Peck. I think first off, I just wanted to go over some numbers to show where we're at in our district. We currently have fifty-five students out due to COVID-related nature exposures. We have ten students out with symptoms awaiting test results. Thirty-eight school personnel are out due to exposures. Two staff out with symptoms waiting for results. So you can see that we've been hit hard this past week, especially since the Thanksgiving holiday. The community is seeing a rise. The health department is currently overwhelmed, so the the word of exposure is not getting out as timely as we would have hoped. And that's just, they're just overwhelmed at this point. We've had administration, nurses. We were down two nurses this week. Office staff, teachers, aides, students affected. I discussed the concerns with Dr. Nash today. He agrees that at this time, he feels we should go remote due to the number of school personnel and students who have been exposed. He said it's not worth having more positive cases and exposures, especially with people heading into the holiday season. We are currently down on our janitorial staff. We have one daytime janitor covering high school, middle school right now, which can be an issue as far as disinfection. It's no fault of their own. It's just that we don't have the numbers to help keep things disinfected appropriately. I'm concerned with teachers and staff reporting as exposures and positive cases have been with both students and staff. If teachers and staff could work remotely, it just puts one more defense in place so that they can come back healthy after the break. I also have a concern with the upcoming Costa Rica trip for the high school students. If we learn of a positive case this week or next week, actually, anything from today is going to be fourteen days out. You know, we're right at Christmas, and that would affect that trip. Any students that were exposed in that timeframe, they would not be allowed to travel. We definitely, as of today, we are seeing a rise in in symptoms in children at school, you know, and and positive cases. So I'd say effective immediately. Might it's not soon enough. You know, definitely, we're at that point. I don't even, you know, feel finishing this week is is a good case scenario, especially for those that may be going on that Costa Rica trip. If anybody tomorrow tests positive or is exposed tomorrow, Christmas Day will be the end of their quarantine period, so that's, you know, basically what we're looking at. And, you know, like I said, Dr. Nash, he is, he is a proponent of of doing a remote schedule just to to keep our numbers down in this community.
Any questions for Ms. Zimmerman?
You said you think we should close, and then when we come back after Christmas break, don't you think there'll be another spike after Christmas break after everyone's together for Christmas?
I know the CDC is saying right now that if we are more careful in this time period right now, it's at least going to decrease those numbers when we do come back. The problem is is preventing a surge on top of a surge. They're worried that those cases that we're seeing this week and that we'll see into next week, those keep, that ball keeps rolling, then we go into, you know, this next break, it's a surge on top of a surge. If we can bring the numbers down just to even that out a little bit, I think that's what the CDC is recommending.
Assuming we go full remote effective tomorrow, I presume is what you're proposing. When would we anticipate being back?
I would, I would say January fourth. I would say you would want to, you know, have that timeframe mostly to prevent any infections going into the holiday where people could potentially spread that around some more. Right now, I mean, we saw the biggest rise this week after Thanksgiving, and time-wise, it, I mean, it timed out perfectly. It was, you know, the exact number of days you would have anticipated after people being together that Thursday. We had all those cases rising, so I would say, you know, you you just, you stop that for right now, you know, and hopefully then everybody's able to come back, you know, maybe a little bit healthier. You can't guarantee everybody is going to stay put, but it definitely decreases what's going on here, you know. And when I'm seeing, you know, fevers and that sort of thing here, it makes me a little nervous that it's, you know, it's really spreading, so.
Essentially, we're talking about three weeks.
Mm-hmm.
I do. Okay.
Okay.
You gotta remember right now to to back her up. The elementary is out until January fourth.
Right.
So basically, we had one positive case in the elementary, and that took out almost thirty people. That one positive case may have, may not, have infected another person, which took out more people. So what happens is one, one or two individuals can literally, literally take on an entire grade. I'm looking at Drewilla right now because I know one individual took out the eighth grade at one point, and the way it just spider webs and the way with the contact tracing it goes, in the CDC doesn't care, the room kind of DOH doesn't care about masks, and they don't really care about six foot. If you're with that person for ten minutes or more, they're putting you on the quarantine list. So the mask are great, the six foot's great, but still, if you're with that person for for more than ten minutes, you're getting put on the list. And again, right now, and Kara said, we're running with two nurses. Our district runs with four nurses without a pandemic. So to run with two nurses with a pandemic, again, very, very stressful, and Kara will tell you, I've seen her running around all over trying to, trying to keep things under control.
Today was tough, for sure. I mean, it is, you know, we have to just take into account that the numbers are increasing, but I do, I do agree with that. My other thing I would like to say is I've seen, you know, the eighth grade out twice. We've had, you know, the elementary is now out, and I just, I would hate to see those same families go through a quarantine going into this next holiday. It's, you know, it's been hard. I mean, for for some, they, twenty-eight days, they had to, you know, be self-isolating in their homes, and if we are asking that again of people, I think that's very, very difficult, you know, going into a time where I think people need a little break as far as that worrying about, you know, being infected.
It's a no-win situation, no matter which way we go, but I definitely think you were not asking too much for three weeks of remote. That is my opinion. I would support that.
Let's let Mary have a have a chance to speak real quick, and maybe she takes some questions, too. I believe she wants to talk on behalf of CFTA. So Mary?
So, um, thank you for the opportunity to address the board. I'm a teacher and the president of the Shenango Forks Teachers Association. This this situation has happened very quickly, and you know, I think we've, we've all just kind of been waiting for it. So, and with my teaching responsibilities, having to transition overnight to remote, even though we anticipated it for everyone, has has been very difficult and very stressful. So there really hasn't been time for me to to take a survey or take a poll, so I can't, I don't want to speak on behalf of the hundred and forty-three members of the Teachers Association. But I can just say that I know how difficult and stressful and frightening this has been for all of us. I've been hearing from people for a couple of days now, and I just wanted to say that I do have every confidence that the board will make the decisions that will keep all of the district's students and faculty and staff safe and healthy under these really difficult circumstances, because this is always what we do in Shenango Forks. Our, our, the safety and health of our students and the members of our community has to come first. As you all know, everybody sitting here knows that the Shenango Forks Teachers Association has a long history of working tirelessly to educate and care for for our students, and this has never been more true than the last ten months. I've only been here twenty years. Shenango Forks has been here a long, a lot longer than that, but I certainly don't remember a time when when our faculty and staff has stepped up to the plate more than they have over the last ten months, and our students and our parents. The whole community has come together to face this and will continue to do so under any circumstances. Our goal collectively is to return to normalcy and to get our kids back in the classroom where they can learn best and we can teach best. It's where we're most effective. It's what we want. It's what we all want. But unfortunately, that day isn't here yet, and I think the last couple of days of of what we have seen happen in the elementary school and now in the high school to an increasing extent, it it's not happening anytime within the next couple of months or, you know, however long that takes. So we have to trust that those responsible for ensuring that the the board and administration to ensuring that we stay able to fulfill these responsibilities continues to make the right decisions, no matter how difficult they are. You know, right now, the majority of us are able to work remotely and continue to teach our students. If we continue to have cases, we may not continue to be able to to function and to fulfill our responsibilities, and no one wants to see that happen. So I think we have to look at this, look at the reality of the situation, and you know, I know that the board will make the right decision, and I I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
And just before we let Mrs. M. take questions, going back to what Mrs. O'Brien just said, really, in essence, it's not three weeks. Nine class days, and if you take those nine class days and divide, it's really four days, four class days per people in the Shenango Forks District. They go every other day, and Wednesday's a remote day. Three-week period. It would be Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Monday, Tuesday, and then remote day and Wednesday is really what we're talking about. The rest would be encumbered and break. So it's really students will be missing either three or four class days in session. If that helps the board decide.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Any?
Have any questions?
Drewilla, you're an admin. You're on. Would you like to say anything on behalf of the admin team?
Good evening, everybody. I think, you know, Kara and Mary have, you know, stressed some of the concerns that that everybody has. I think I don't really have much more to add than than what they've said. We are always concerned for our students, I'm in our staff, and just speaking, you know, from the middle school where we've had to close the same grade two times. You know, our last one was right before the Thanksgiving break, and that, you know, that put out over about forty families, you know, including students and staff. So we would just hate to see something like that happen again to our students' families and our staff, especially, you know, going into our next break.
Thank you.
Joe, what are you proposing? So are you saying, like, shut down tomorrow or Monday? What is?
Well, we're actually, tomorrow would be the be the first remote, full remote day. According to Kara, that's the day, and Doc Nash, that would be the day that we have to stop the contact trace back to where we need to, so it'd be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, because remember, the day right before vacations are remote day anyways.
It just doesn't give parents a lot of time. That's my only concern, but I get it. I'm not a medical professional and don't ever want to be. They have this difficult job if that's what they think. My.
Spears, I agree with you, but I can I can tell you right now, when we give them one hour's notice to close an elementary school like I had to do on Monday, that that's less time, and
Right, right.
Again, you know, when it happens in the CDC, the CDC, when the Department of Health calls you and says you have X amount of people you need to, you know, exit the building immediately, you gotta do what you have to do, and I put a letter out to the community. I think everyone read it, and the teachers read it, and the staff read it, but those aren't fun for any of us. It's not fun for the community. It's not fun for the staff. It's not fun for the admin team, and and it's just, again, I think Kara or Mary said it, that this is, this is different. This is nothing that we signed up for, and this is, you know, I've been, I've been doing this for twenty-three years, and I've never seen anything close to what's going on right now. Where literally I'm getting, every time the phone rings, you know, I cringe a little bit of what happened now. I'll see Kara on on the, on the name come up or something. I'm like, what is it now? What what happened? So it's, it's definitely, and I know, Spears, you've, you've, your family's been quarantined. Mr. O'Brien, I know your family's been quarantined, and Mr. Faber, your family's been quarantined, so you guys have felt it firsthand. So, so like, like Mary said, we're going to do what we're told to do. I mean, you know, you five have ran for the board. You're elected by the community, represents the best interest of the community, and I know Kara wanted to speak with you tonight, and I know and I know Mary wanted to speak to you. And the other thing it does is is a lot of our high school, middle school kids are watching the the smaller kids in elementary school. And we've had some requests. Dave Gannell isn't at the board, he isn't on tonight. He is actually in quarantine as well. We've lost an administrator, a couple administrators. But middle school and high school kids right now really do need to be home with with the younger kids because the elementary is closed, which would actually had some requests for kids to go remote so they could stay home with their siblings, so just another thing to consider. I mean, there's so much to consider. We're not going to get it all out tonight, but but again, I don't believe Mrs. Zimmerman or Mrs. M. would speak to the board if they did not feel that was the best. It's it's up to the five of you. Amy, you can do a motion. Take the vote.
Joe, I have a question.
Yep, go ahead, Lynn.
How does this affect our BOSI students? I mean, BOSI's is still open. Are we still busing those kids to and from BOSI's if we go full remote?
We could, but Mr. McDermott, how would that work? Charge transportation?
All I, we can still continue to transport them. You know, I would imagine the children that are in the programs all day. But if the logic is to protect families, one question to consider is whether whether they should go. Because they could bring COVID home to the family that we've sent home to be safe from what I'm listening to, so.
I understand what you're saying, Bernie. What I'm hearing is we're discussing the situation of our environment at Shenango Forks and how that impacts, you know, being down to one janitor, a number of people out. But what is the environment for the BOSI's kids? I don't know if it's a blanket catch-all protocol to put them all on remote.
I mean, we certainly can continue to transport the other.
Okay.
So the, I guess a specific decision would have to be decided about current tech, because that's half-days. And when we were transporting before, they're missing their remote classes because of the timing. There's not enough time to get home and be in class, so.
Okay.
The the other question the board has to consider, too, is if we do send, shut down the district, are you shutting down staff and students or just students? We didn't have anyone in elementary school today except for staff, and we ended up quarantining, I think. Kara, help me. Six or seven more staff today were quarantined in elementary?
Yes, yes. So we did lose some there, too.
Because somebody was there today that tested positive or follow-up from something else?
With HIPAA, we have to really be careful what we say, but it it was related to to an exposure.
Um, what about special needs students? Like, what's our plan for getting them their services during this remote time?
Right now, clearly, I know in elementary schools that that they're not coming in to get the services, we thought, and and I spoke with Ms. Cool about this. Yes, we thought because the situation bringing them in right now would not be advantageous, and like I said, we had to quarantine more elementary teachers today. So right now, they're not getting all, all they can get remotely. Obviously, they're getting, but they're not getting any in-person.
There's really a no-win situation here, honestly. There's, and there's no good answer here. But Joe, I think you nailed on the head there. The CDC and the DOH don't care about masks and social distancing. The guidelines for schools are ridiculous, and, I mean, in in-person education is by far the best thing, and the kids should be in school. However, I hate to, you know, have staff and students be quarantined during Christmas time. I mean, my son was one of the eighth graders that had quarantined during Thanksgiving, and it was not pleasant whatsoever. And he was in a pool when the contact happened, so, I mean, in a vat of chlorine, basically, and the CDC and DOH still said, nope, he's got to quarantine no matter what, so as much as I want kids to be in school and stuff, I also hate the fact that have students and staff be exposed and risk having to spend their Christmas sitting at home, not not with anything there. And like I said, there's really a no, no easy answer, no right answer with this, and really stinks with the whole thing, but.
Kara, we we tell the board and just the people around the call exactly what quarantine entails, because I think a lot of people, unless they've been through it, may not know exactly what a quarantine is.
Yes, it's, um, it is tough, because in your own home, if you've been exposed, you need to self-isolate, so you would have to be in a separate room, separate bathroom, have meals left at your door to ideally prevent spread if you end up with that virus. So it's hard for for fourteen days to have to do that. And, you know, I I can attest that I I've heard, you know, not fun, so.
My thinking is, I'm a big advocate of keeping the kids in school, but I'm also very concerned about the mental health of the kids, and if we quarantine now, then hopefully the kids will be able to be in school for the deep of winter when they truly feel isolated. I'd like to see the kids in school in January and February for sure, so that's my thinking.
And looking at mental health, too, Mary, if if they're quarantined on Christmas or Christmas Eve, when when Grandma and Grandpa comes over and their cousins and nephews, and and all of a sudden, we take that holiday, we don't take it, but but COVID takes that holiday away. That's not going to help mental health of anyone either.
Exactly.
So, so again, I I work for the board. The staff works for the board. CFTA works for the board. It it's, it's, at the end of the day, closing the elementary school, what was my decision? I had reason to close. I didn't need board approval to do so. I did what's best, best interest of the district under my jurisdiction. I don't have a reason to close the middle school and high school like I did the elementary school on Monday. So this is more of a board decision. Now you're closing it for different reasons. So it's it's totally, again, you know, the board can discuss. It's really not executive session. If you want to do a motion, Mrs. O'Brien, and then get a second and open it for discussion and take a vote, probably the real way to do it.
It's an action. I don't, it needs a motion?
If we're, if we're going to officially close it by the board, then then you have to do a motion.
Okay. Okay, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to go full remote. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Spears. Do you have a second?
Second.
Can we just amend that, Amy, to go full remote until January fourth, so we have an date on it for the record?
I was just going to say that. Make it January fourth.
Okay, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to go full remote effective immediately through January fourth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Correct.
Thank you, Spears. Mary, can you second? Do you want, thank you. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Reluctantly, I.
Lynn Lockwood.
Lynn, can you repeat, only because you were partially muted, and we didn't hear you fully?
I abstain.
Spears Tomatoes?
Hi.
Mary Collins?
Hi.
Mike Fabra?
Reluctantly, I.
Okay, motion is passed. The district will be full remote through January fourth.
So I'm going to assume.
So the details, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would assume when you say that. I would assume when you say the district, that means staff and students then.
That's up to you. I.
Joe, could you get an all call out like immediately though? Because, you know, we parents are gonna have to scramble for tomorrow.
I i- if if you permit me, Mr. McDermott, you have the same all-call abilities I have and I do not want to leave the meeting. Can you get that all call out for me immediately?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott.
Thank you.
That the staff who's on, and I looked in in the panelists for in in the gallery, and I think we have over half the CFTA on, so I will say it. If if you want to come in tomorrow and collect anything that you need to collect, the buildings will be open all day tomorrow to come in and collect what you need for the next next eight or nine teaching days, so hopefully you can come in tomorrow, get what you need. We will leave the buildings open if you need to come and go. I will talk to the three building secretaries for sign-in and sign-out sheet in case we do need in contact here tracing. So I I think Mrs. M left the panel, but a- any questions on behalf of the CFTA for that? Mary, yeah, can we bring Mary back?
Yeah.
Um, I guess when we went to discussion, I should have asked this, but so what are we doing with the BOSI students? Like, are we gonna bust them tomorrow?
If they want to be bust, I don't have an issue with it, Mr. McDern, if you can get the buses, obviously you can.
Well, the the or we're talking out of district students that are full day. I mean, some go to the area center, some go to Binghamton University, some go to East or West Learning Center, so those we would continue to transport.
Mrs. M, go ahead.
I just want to clarify, so elementary has been teaching from the school building remotely. And it would be pretty impossible for us or any of the faculty to come and get what we need and then go home and teach. So we're going to be allowed to teach from the school building for tomorrow and then Monday we teach from home?
That that's, I think that's the best solution, Mary, I I know that a lot of staff want to teach from the school because all their materials are there. But again, if we do that, just like today, you're you're exposing them to the same risk.
Right, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that that we will be given tomorrow to regroup and then start fresh on Monday from home.
Yes, yeah. And and like I said, if any teacher needs anything through the next, you know, eight days, I'll make sure, and Drew's on, I'm sure Catherine's on, and Dave Daniels for the audience too. We'll make sure that there's some type of sign-in or sign-out sheet at the main office, so if anything does happen, we will have contact tracing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on, the second thing on my report, Mr. Rulo wants to talk about a principal bell, some some, I'm sorry, not my report, a bell schedule switch. I want him to get it out as soon as he can, I know he's talked with Dave Daniels in the high school about it and asked for it to the board and the community tonight, so we can get that out on the table.
All right, thanks, Dr. Pack. So we have almost four, you know, weeks of data now since we crafted our initial plan for school reopening. And we had quite a large window. I'm looking at our schedule, our staff reports at 7:40, support staff at 7:30. And we started allowing students and buses to arrive at 7:50 until 8:18. What we're finding is is that we're able to get students into the building a lot quicker than we initially thought, now that we've had some experience with this. So we would like to gain a two minutes per period. I'm in the nine-period day and we would have buses pick students up at their house probably about 15 minutes earlier than current. And we would just allow students to start coming in right at 7:40. So we think we can get them in the building, get them into classes. So our parent drop-offs and our student walkers would have to be, you know, arrive earlier. We would move our remote student attendance up by 10 minutes. And then we could start announcements at 8 o'clock and start period one at 8:02. We're still going to dismiss at the same time because getting into the winter months, we didn't want to impact buses leaving the middle school and high school and getting back later to the elementary for that run. So we added those minutes on to the morning. Does anybody have any questions or or concerns or issues with that? All right, so what our plan is, is we would start this January 4th when we return from break. So we have our 15-week reports that will end next week and be sent out right before the winter break. So we would mail these, you know, a copy of this new bell schedule home with those 15-week reports to families. We'll we'll post on our website. We also have to get the the company here, we we can't really start this any sooner because we have to get the bell company here too to update the the bell schedule in the buildings. All right, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rulo, I guess I just want to get to the community tonight, I want to get out to the board tonight. Again, I don't think everyone's gonna be upset that we're adding more time in the school day, so good thing. Next, we have Steve Tronovich, he's going to give us a student performance improvement initiative and continue with every month, I'm trying to highlight an aspect of a school. Last month, we highlighted elementary school, this is Mr. Tronovich highlighting the high school tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Pack, I'm gonna screen share so everyone can see my presentation that I created for this evening. It says that host disabled participant screen sharing at this point.
Mrs. McMullin?
I do not know why that's doing that. All right, hold on just one minute. All right, I will pull your, I'll pull your slides up and you can tell me when to switch, I don't know why it's disabled.
While we're waiting, like Dr. Pack said, my name is Steve Tronovich, I'm a high school special education teacher, for those of you that don't know me. Obviously, you've had some bigger issues and concerns this evening, obviously COVID-related. The one thing I'll say leading into this is that this presentation has to do with improving student performance. And it actually will work well if we move to remote at any time. So it was created with hybrid schedule in mind, however, knowing that this was something looming, it's something that we could use moving forward as well to help support students. So unfortunately, I don't know if anyone can see the presentation at this point?
No. All right.
Oh, okay, hold on, Erin, I think I got it. To try, I should try a bunch.
Ah, terrific. Thank you very much.
Beginning to be an expert on Zoom.
Gotcha, so can everyone see this now?
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
Terrific, excuse me. Well, I get my notes here. Awesome, so thank you again, I thank you to Dr. Pack and to the board for giving me this opportunity to discuss this initiative that we recently implemented at the high school to support some of our struggling students. And also I thank a couple of my colleagues, Andrea Gumbel and Axie Roma for their support on this, as well as Principal Dave Daniels, who helped me really roll this out and has been very supportive throughout this entire process. Feel free to stop and ask any questions as we move through this, or you can wait till the end. So it's called the Student Performance Improvement Initiative, it's fun to say because it's SPY when you use the acronym. So what is SPY? Really, this covers three extremely important areas. The first one is communication. The initiative increases communication with parents of struggling students in an effort to improve student performance. There's always a need for family-to-school connection and this helps with that area. The second, being a collaborative data collecting process that allows us to have in-house data to enable us to see deficits as well as areas that students seem to be struggling. So let's face it, this is a whole new territory right now in education for students and educators. We're juggling platforms and hybrid and obviously remote, and this is that has led to some areas of with issues and deficits. The third area that this helps is trying to create next step action plans. So it's gonna help facilitate change and supports for students based on the information that we've gathered. Again, reviewing what's working and not working so that way we can move forward and try to create the best educational experience possible. So why SPY? Um, as I mentioned before, these are difficult times as we've been discussing so far throughout this meeting. It's no secret that our way of educating students in the US has had its obstacles since COVID has started. So that's why we've implemented SPY at this point. Um, students, teachers, faculty, staff are trying to navigate the difficult obstacles that were faced. And with changes of this magnitude, we felt like this was something that was needed. So again, because of the unprecedented times, another reason for SPY is that we've had some noticeable academic deficits, and we all know that Schenango Forks has prided itself on on academic excellence. And unfortunately, through the first quarter, we haven't seen our high standards of education being met by students during this first quarter, they've struggled. There have been noticeable deficits that we aren't accustomed to, so this process really helps bring to light the student struggles. And we're gonna do that in a unified fashion, I'll go through that process in just a little bit. Lastly, as you know, you we have a staff that's driven to help all of the students here. And they've really been a catalyst for this initiative because we want to see the changes that will help these students during these tough times. And then lastly, as I mentioned before, the system's in place to help out during, if we have to go full remote, it translates well to that. So next, let's take a look at the SPY process, so in a in a nutshell, teachers that review their grade books weekly and then identify students that are failing. When doing that, all right, they're supposed to pinpoint a primary reason for their poor performance. And I'm gonna show you how we do that and how we input that information. Teachers then take that information, we have a shared Google sheet that includes the course that the student is failing as well as the reason that they are failing. The next step in this is that we have SPY team members that are consisting of teacher aides and myself that are sending emails to parents of students that are failing two or more courses. And then lastly, for those next action steps, the grade level teams are recently formed, look it over and review the data to try to determine trends and then come up with additional supports that need to be put into place to help these students. So let's take a look at what it looks like for the staff on their end. So hopefully you can see, this popped me out to the Schenango Forks High School shared drive, and this is something we have all access to as faculty here in the high school. What I did is I created a SPY communication folder that's located right here. So weekly, teachers again will review their grade books and then determine students that are failing. When they do that, you'll notice I created these logs, there's ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. And for the purpose of tonight, I created an example SPY log that we're gonna look at. So you notice it looks somewhat complicated on first view. However, it's already been preloaded with student names, parent email. And for faculty, what they'll do is they'll open this up and you'll notice that I have an example up here that if English nine, Mrs. Reed, if someone were to be failing in that course, she would fill in that information and then write down or put an X in the primary reason that the student is failing. So you'll notice in this first one up here that it's absences is the X. So that'd be the primary reason, even if the student had a ton of missing assignments, right? But that's a byproduct of the absences. So we want to know the primary reason so that way we can come up with supports. Next, I'll show you over here, we have a teacher's notes area where teachers could add any pertinent information that might be important to other teachers. So that way it's another level of communication among faculty. Lastly, I'll scroll down here and show you what I do with the information and the data. So you'll notice down here that I've totaled at the bottom, all right? And based on this example, and notice that missing assignments are definitely an issue with the student population as well as absences. And then we also create graphs so that way we can better visualize what's going on with our with our demographic. Based on this information, that's when the teacher aides on Wednesday mornings, part of the SPY team members will look at this information and then compile the emails that will be sent out to the parents. Then after that, the next step is to have the have them look over the data, the grade levels, and determine next level supports. All right. Sorry, one second, pull this back up. Okay, so that was step by step, how is it looks like for faculty? So the next thing I just want to go over real quick is that we've actually had some early success so far. Based on the two weeks that we've done this, because we started it in the second quarter. What we've noticed is that there's been a change, a spark of change here. We've had students actually reaching out to teachers based on information being sent home and and hopefully having conversations with their parents. And they've been reaching out, asking about their grades and how they can improve. The next area of change that we've noticed so far is with the parents, and it's opened some dialogue. They've actually reached out to us afterwards, expressing their appreciation. And we've had, and they've said that they've had conversations with their students about their struggles and how that they can work to do better. Next area is actually in services. The big thing is that there's platforms that the parents can be using to monitor grades. And they've actually reached out in terms of how can they get to those platforms and how can they use them effectively? And we've been able to get that information out, as well as asking to set up meetings with guidance to discuss some of the problems that their students may have. And then I think we talked about this a little bit earlier too, is that tackling the social emotional issues that are tied to our current situation. We've had some parents actually ask about counseling services too, which I think is just an enormous step in the level of supports. The next part though is that that we've actually seen some academic improvement, as I was going through the data yesterday. In two weeks, we've seen a decrease in the amount of students failing multiple classes in three out of our four grade levels at the high school. So we're hoping to continue to see that downward trend of students failing multiple courses. So any questions, comments, or concerns from anyone? If there aren't any, I'd just like to say I truly appreciate this opportunity and the time that you gave me this evening. I was really glad to share, if anybody would like this presentation to have, feel free to contact me or let me know. Otherwise, I hope everyone has a great night.
Great job, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tronovich, we appreciate that. Moving on, I have one more thing, and I think Mrs. O'Brien, this too is going to take a motion, is every year we do a February bus vote and then we do a May budget vote. But because of COVID and the pandemic we're in, I would like to say, or I'd like to ask the board, can we move our February bus vote and combine it with our May bus vote? I'm sorry, their May budget vote. Instead of doing double duty, sending out mailings, an extra cost of the district for the bus vote, we usually get less than 50 to 75 people voting in February anyways, can we just combine that and do one vote in May?
Okay.
And that's not odd, a lot of districts do it that way, one vote.
There was a reason why we moved it, wasn't it for some sort of funding or something that we could become that? We moved it up, it wasn't always that way. Maybe Bernie would know, there was some sort of funding or something, that's why we moved it to February.
Mark, that predates me, can you help me?
I mean, maybe it's no longer applicable, but I I remember that was, there was a reason we moved it up so we could apply for something that we weren't applying for if we waited till May to have the vote. Maybe it's not a thing anymore.
Mark, do you know of anything?
I don't, I mean, as long as I've been here, it's been.
Okay.
I don't know why why it is in February or March as opposed to the.
When I first got on the board, it wasn't, I know it got moved and I thought it was to apply for some sort of funding or something. But you know what, it could have been a one-time thing.
I'll I could find out tomorrow.
Well, if we're not applying for some sort of funding, it really doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just in case you wanted to know the reason why it was actually moved.
Can we table it, well, tabling through till January 7th, will that hurt anything, Joe?
Well, if we're not, if we're not saving it, I that was just for my curiosity, I mean, here's the thing, if they're, they don't know about it, obviously, we're not applying for some sort of funding. So it probably was something way back when. I know when we first got into propane, there was a whole bunch of incentives and maybe that had something to do with it.
But if Mark could find out, just to be sure, I would hate to move it and then find out we missed something.
Well, I I know a lot of schools vote in May, so whatever it is that we're supposed to be applying for, obviously, they can't be applying for. And Mr. Demiles may be right, it may have been, because back in 12, 13, with all the propane switches. Something like, again, I can't go back that far and tell you.
Are you, Joe, are you? Are you, Joe, are you comfortable putting that on January's agenda?
Bernie, we have enough time if we have to vote in February, if we go out to January, are you okay?
You wouldn't vote in February, you'd have to vote in March because you need 45 days. The, the funding for buses falls distinctly in six-month periods. If the May vote is held when it should be, um, which shouldn't be a problem this year. Last year, districts had to have time to switch to mailing everything. So it got moved out to June, but school budget votes, each district decided before. And a lot of them were in June, which is too late to get a purchase order in. Um, but now with a May vote, it shouldn't be a problem getting the purchase order in before the end of June. So that our reimbursement funding still comes in the same time periods. Because otherwise we'd miss like a six-month payment, which, you know, kind of upsets the financial cycle. But it shouldn't be an issue getting the P O in before the end of June. And as far as getting the buses, it, it really doesn't matter when they come.
Bernie, you still have 45 days from January 10th, though, if you wanted to vote into February.
Well, okay, I mean, yeah, it'd be the end of February, whatever. But yeah.
Okay, let's let, if the board is okay, let's let Mark find out for sure. And then we'll see this on the January 7th agenda. And we don't need to motion a table because it's not a set action item. So we'll just. Okay, very good. Anything else?
I am done.
Okay, uh, board report. I had nothing, however, given our conversation regarding remote. I have been processing and I just wanted to talk about allowing faculty the opportunity to choose where they're teaching from. Uh, if, if teaching from a classroom, an empty classroom is, is more conducive to effective teaching, I'd like to give them that opportunity. And if they are not comfortable, then they can choose where they, they want to teach from home.
Yeah, I have a hard time like with, if you, they walk into the school and you don't have a million people coming into the school, they could potentially walk their classroom without coming into contact with anyone. And if they're wearing a mask and they pass somebody in the hallway, that should be no reason for them to be quarantined. So I would agree with you, Amy, if, if they want to teach from their classroom, I think that should be an option.
I honestly don't care. I mean, if, if, if they want to teach from the classroom, I have no issue with it. You, you're going to create an equity issue, but that, that's something the C F T A can, can deal with on their own. So again, I don't have an issue with it.
Well, well, let's discuss that because I only see the perspective that I see. I'm not running a district. I don't see it from all the angles as much as I would like to. So if we need to discuss this further, but my initial piece that I'm bringing is what I said, based on, you know, half an hour of processing this information. So.
Amy, I would, I, I agree with you. Like if I, if this was asked to be, I prefer to be in, in my classroom if the kids are remote. I just feel more comfortable in the classroom than at home. So I mean, I mean, I would be more than happy to have the teachers make the choice what they want. But I mean, if teachers want to go in the classroom, I think they should.
Well, so, some teachers remember to have a hard time teaching at home. They have my kids or spouses at home. Which kind of takes out the quiet space. And also they don't have all the technology at home that they have in, in district. So again, I don't really care either way. So i- i- I guess earlier you said it was up to me, so I'll, I'll make the decision. I don't care. If they want to come in and teach, fine. If they don't want to come and teach, fine.
And I still feel it should be up to you. I'm just sharing, you know, thinking about what effective teaching. And I use that term loosely because it's so challenging for everybody right now. But to give them the best chance for effective teaching, I think they should choose their environment.
I'm in full support of that, speaking from a teacher's viewpoint too. It's frustrating enough knowing that you're not able to do everything you can for each of those kids. And if you're at home and don't have the materials that can help even just one student, um, get it. They need to have the option of having it right there with them in the classroom. So I'm in full support of that.
I, I, I think for equity reasons that then if, if that's the feeling of the board, then we should just make it that, that students go remote and not staff then. We'll make it easy. And we'll just, students are remote, all staff report has, has deemed. And, and again, I think it was Miss Lockwood that just said, if you can't put a mask on and walk straight to a classroom, then, then there's definitely issues. So I, I am more than fine with that. We will have all staff report until Wednesday before vacation. And then all staff and all students report back on January 4th. Does that make sense to everyone?
It does. Spiros, you look like you want to say something. I want to make sure we all have an opportunity here.
I agree with you, Joe.
I, I just, you know, I, there's no good answer. And, um, I like the idea of giving everyone the option. I just think that if we're worried about exposures and we're worried about ruining, you know, getting people, um, quarantined or whatever. Because yes, it's real easy to say, put on the mask and walk to your classroom and don't talk to anybody else. But I also know how people are. And i- i- if people got quarantined today in the elementary school, isn't that what we heard? And there's no kids. It's only staff. So what's going to stop that from happening again? I, I guess, you, you know, obviously, there's no perfect, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what's going to happen. I just like the idea of giving people the option more than saying, report anyway. Because I think some teachers can absolutely do their job just as well at home. And if we should give them that option. And at the same time, if they have all their equipment, props, technology at school, everything at their fingertips, by all means, let them do it there. But I, I just like the idea of giving people more options than to say, you have to report. My opinion.
I agree with you, Spiros. Joe, do you feel comfortable like telling us how you want to leave it, just so those watching our meeting right now know where they stand?
Yeah, I was going to turn my phone on because I, I got 17 text messages in less than 30 minutes. So we'll just turn that over. So I, 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 I am fine with choice. I am more than fine with choice. I, I'll tell you right now, I, I know some teachers can teach more than adequately from home. We have a lot of teachers right now teaching from the entire school year remotely from home. And they're doing an awesome job, an absolutely awesome job, especially on the elementary level. We have quite a few and they're doing a great job. So at the end of the day, I don't really care as long as the best education is being provided by the staff. I don't care if they do it from the comfort of their office at home or their, or their classroom in school. And again, I've heard, I've had staff tell me, you know what, I don't want to be at home. I, I need the peace, the tranquility. I need the, the, the equipment in my office, in the classroom. I've had other staff tell me, you know what, I've got everything I can, like Mr. Miles just said, I've got everything I can teach with at home. So.
Right.
If, if you want me to make the decision, I'll make it right now for the board. And I will say it's, it's the teacher's choice. If you want to come and teach in the classroom, go ahead. If you want to stay home.
Yep, very good. Okay, excellent. Um, was there any other discussion the board might have? About anything? Okay. All right, moving on. Okay. 4.1 extracurricular and clubs upon recommendation of the superintendent. A motion to appoint the following as club advisors. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Spiros, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion?
On November 12th, we spoke to the issue of bringing in more clubs. And we had decided if something changed, uh, we're not opposed to revisiting it. So I'm just wondering what changed.
These mirror, I believe it should be the same clubs I'm opening right now. It should be student council, band and chorus. It's the same ones we've been discussing since whatever date you just said, November 12th, I'm sure. And even before, I talked to Jonathan Edwards, if he's on, he can chime in by all means. And right now, these are the only three that, that's being pursued. So again, it's the student council with Kathleen Cranta, the band and chorus with Ken Star and Alexandra Bryant. So.
Pursued by who? Who brought them to?
Uh, Mr. Edwards is logging on, I think.
It just, I just added Mr. Edwards in case you wanted to speak.
Mr. Edwards, would you like to speak? I know at one point you, you did want to speak on behalf.
Um, yeah, basically, uh, I just wanted to advocate for those stipends, for those individuals. Uh, they're, for the most part, doing the same work that they would do in any other given year. Most of the performances at this point seem to be scheduled as normal. The NISM competition is still on, all county ban is still on. Uh, you know, they're still performing the duties that are associated with those stipends. I know, uh, the student council's been working on a digital Greschen thing. Uh, so I just think it's important that those individuals, you know, receive the compensation that they would in any other year. Uh, because they're doing the same amount of work, if not more, uh, given the circumstance. That's really all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. And these were the only, uh, stipends right now that we're currently looking at, correct?
Uh, yeah, as far as I know, uh, the union kind of worked with the district at the start of the year uh, to try to identify which programs realistically could run. Uh, and out of the list of, I think, 37 programs, uh, we put forward, I believe 10. Uh, I know that the board has approved about four of them so far. You know, these are really the last three that, that we felt really, these people are deserving. You know, they, like I said, they are continuing to do the same amount of work, if not more. Uh, and the kids deserve these responsibilities. They're great on college applications. And, you know, sometimes it can make the difference, you know, that you perform to all county. Especially in some of these unique programs where kids are, are competing for spots in really unique and, and competitive schools. So we want to offer those opportunities to kids. And I think it's important that the advisors just be compensated for what they're, what they're putting in.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Additional discussion from the board?
The only thing I think I can say on, on behalf of the district is if these are not approved tonight, I do believe that Mrs. Cranta will halt immediately all National Honor Society. And I believe Mr. Starr will as well, and Ms. Bryant will as well. And it's only going to be detrimental to the students. So I'm just putting that out there right now that I've talked to two to three people involved. And again, I know that they're not going to continue on.
You mean, uh, student council, Jonah, Honor Society?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're, you're right. It's been a long day, Mike.
Any further discussion?
Somebody else, does the best interest of the kids be, um, wanting this position? If we decided to wait until we see if some of these things are going to come to pass?
All right now, Mary, like Jonathan said, we know the music is, is going to come to pass. It, it may be virtual, but still going to happen. And I know with, uh, with the student council that that's currently going on. I know they just did homecoming and like Mr. Edwards said, they do have the Greschen thing coming up they're doing. So the advisors are doing the work currently. I mean, it's not traditional, but nothing right now is traditional in the entire district. So there's, there's nothing traditional about anything that we're doing. But is work getting done and are students being impacted positively? The answer is definitely yes. And it gets about our webpage. You can see homecoming is actually on our webpage right now.
Again, I'm coming as a, a teacher too. And my thought is if, if it's in the best interest of the kids, it just kind of bothers me that, and this is just a personal thing with me. It just bothers me that, um, we're considering compensating for it. We're just trying to make sure that we have those things going. And I get that and we may or we may not. And I get that too. The only part that bothers me is I wish, I wish it hadn't been said that they're going to resign if they don't get the money. I just wish that had been kept to themselves because I like to think that we're all the best we can be. And we want our, our salaries. I'm not against the money or any of that. I just, it concerns me when the threats come.
Anything else? Roll call. Amy O'Brien? Hi. Lynn Lockwood?
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes?
Hi.
Mike Fabra?
Hi.
Mary Collins?
Hi.
Motion passed. 4.2, um, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve 4.2 through 4.10. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Mike. May I have a second? Thank you, discussion. Roll call. Amy O'Brien?
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood?
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes?
Hi.
Mike Fabra?
Hi.
Mary Collins? Mary's frozen. Let's give her a second.
Mary, I think you were frozen, if you want to say.
I, I was frozen. Thank you. Hi.
Motion passed. 5.1, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve 5.1 through 5.5. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Spiros.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion? Roll call. Amy O'Brien?
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood?
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes?
Hi.
Michael Fabra?
Hi.
Mary Collins? Motion passed. 6.1. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve 6.1. If you're, actually, I, that is wrong. 6.1 and 6.2 is an FYI. So we're going to change it to 6.3. A motion to approve 6.3 through 6.5. May I have a motion, please?
Motion or second.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Spiros. Discussion? And roll call. Amy O'Brien? Lynn Lockwood?
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes?
Hi.
Michael Fabra?
Hi.
Mary Collins?
Hi.
Motion passed. 6.6, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve a donation in the amount of $1,000 from S E I Design Group. A donation in the amount of $250 from Farnolay Distributing, Inc. A donation in the amount of $250 from Air Temp Heating and Air Conditioning, Inc. A donation in the amount of $500 from Fusillo Nissan. A donation in the amount of $100 from Hemp Gang, Hemp Geek. A donation in the amount of 200 from Mandorf and Fenwick. A donation in the amount of five, pardon me, of $50 from LeLor Shared Services. A donation in the amount of $300 from the Broome County Sheriff's Law Enforcement Officers Association. A donation in the amount of $124 from the Hoffman Car Wash Fundraiser. A donation in the amount of $1,245 from the Schenandofer Elementary P T O through their GoFundMe fundraiser to be used for the Christmas basket fund. May I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Okay. Motion was Lynn, second by Spiros. Discussion? Roll call. Amy O'Brien? Lynn Lockwood?
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes?
Hi.
Michael Fabra?
Hi.
And Mary Collins?
Hi.
Motion passed. Thank you for these donations. 7.1. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the Board of Education minutes from the regular board meeting of November 12th, 2020, and the special board meeting of December 2nd, 2020, as attached. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Spiros. Discussion? Roll call.
Amy O'Brien?
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood?
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes?
Hi.
Michael Vavra?
Hi.
And Mary Collins?
Hi.
Motion passed. 8.1. A motion for consideration of executive session to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law and the medical, financial, credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. Discussions involving proposed pending or current litigation and contract negotiations. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Spiros?
Second.
Mike, discussion? Roll call.
Amy O'Brien?
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood?
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes?
Hi.
Michael Vavra?
Hi.
Mary Collins?
Hi.
Motion passed. We will not be, we will be coming out to adjourn the meeting, however, we will not be taking any action. I just wanted to say two things really quick. First, there's a possibility tonight that you may be able to see the Northern Lights, Aurora Borealis, so outside tonight, take a look to the north. And also on behalf of the Board of Education, I want to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday and a new year. And we will see you at our next regular meeting on January 7th. Have a good night.
Mary Collins is in the audience. How do we get her out of the audience?
I'll get her. Nope. Mary Collins is in here now. She did it.
Actually, Mary, I'm your honor. Can you put Mary in for a minute?
Sure.
All right, one correction before we adjourn the meeting. Our next regular Board of Education meeting will be on June 14th, 2021. Okay, 9.1.
Oh, hey, hold on. I just want to ask Mary I'm a question. I just.
Okay.
Hey, Mary, really quick, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Do I need to put an email out to the CFTA or is it very clear what's going on, going forward?
Well, I've gotten a couple emails that it's not real clear that people can work from school if they choose to, so it might be helpful.
All right, I'll do one soon as this meeting is over then. I just don't want to flood people anymore and they're flooded.
Thank you.
Yep, I'll do it. All right, thank you, Amy.
Okay, 9.1, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Amy O'Brien?
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes?
Hi.
Mike Vavra?
Hi.
Mary Collins?
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood?
Hi.
Motion passed. Have a great rest of the month.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
And happy new year.
Right.